Ready, brother? Anytime you like, boss.
Just want to make sure.
It's 2:18, by the way, yeah. Yeah. 7:10?
Good evening. I'd like to call Lawrence City Council meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, May 21st. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Vasquez.
Present.
Counselor Plant noted Counselor Toomey.
Here.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor Monte noted Counselor Aquino.
Present.
Counselor Bernal.
Present.
Counselor Vice President Rivera.
Present.
And Counselor President Moran.
Here. Please rise for a moment of silence for Mary LaPlante, the mother of Counselor LaPlante, who passed away this morning. Our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We choose to declare the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, I need a motion to accept the minutes from May 7. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The IAs have an excited one. Agenda is public participation. Participant, you have two and a half minutes to state your comments. After two minutes, the bell will ring. You have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. Please address the city council as a whole, not as individuals. First participant, H. Mali. Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Mali.
My name is Mr. Chester. Good evening, honorable members of the Lawrence City Council. In this exciting election year of 2013, our citizens can see how our city is moving forward with Honorable Mayor Lantigua. In this important election year, our citizens demand support of our police department and their union. With the impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Romeo, the crime rate has declined 19 percent, auto theft 33 percent. We demand support of the police department and their union and do not touch their budget. The Crime Prevention Unit, community policing, has been important to us. Citizens are witnessing the best job performance of DPW workers. The leadership of the DPW has been impeccable. The new trash policy, the bridges open. We demand of you support of DPW worker in their contract negotiation. Our firefighters are without contract for more than three years. Honorable Mayor Lantigua worked hard to open new fire station and buy new equipment. We demand of you support of our brother firefighter Tim Matwood to get his benefit. The best gift of the Honorable Mayor Lantigua for our children was turnaround plan and Harvard Scholar Superintendent Rally, the Lawrence Public School is moving forward. Our teachers must know our citizens are behind them 100 percent. After three years without contract, we demand of you to have a good contract for our teachers. Lawrence Public School can move forward with support of our teachers and their union. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Michelle Paletta. Name and address for the record, please, Michelle.
My name is Michelle Paletta. I'm at 198 Essex Street in the city. You have to pardon me reading the notebook. I wanted to make sure I hit the important points very quickly. I'm here to speak for the citizens who are handicapped and disabled. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, since 2010, a magistrate of federal court had approved the establishment of the ADA Commission Board. ADA is the American Disability Act that oversees the availability of all disabled persons to have the same privileges as those without disabilities. According to the city guidelines on the commission on the handicap, the ADA Board requires the mayor to present to the city candidates for eight positions. Majority of handicaps must be on the board and one such person may be just a member of a handicapped person in the immediate family. Persons with disabilities, one member of the ADA Board may be appointed or elected by the Board to oversee things that are going on on the board. For over four years, Mayor Lantigua has refused to appoint an additional eight members to be presented to the city council for approval. The mayor has been approached by myself, the city attorney, Charles Bodie, and the city ADA advocate, Nicholas Gavera. The mayor has frequently refused to submit names to the council for your approval. The ADA Commission Board does not receive any compensation for our work. So it costs the city nothing. The ADA Act protects the young and older residents from the inability to take part in steady participation of events. In addition, the ADA works to, I'm sorry, to extend equal rights for each person. For example, the city elections division has a roof lowered for those who are handicapped and need to sit. We also have a voting machine that can be accessed for the deaf, hard of hearing, and it also translates to Spanish. The city is noncompliant in several ADA issues, including handicap bathrooms in all of the facilities, lower the windows in the banks, and other places like that. Might please, but the city council to prompt to press Mayor Lantigua regarding the establishment of the ADA Commission Board. As it stands, the city is in violation of federal commitment and as such can be ordered to pay a fine. Council members, I thank you for your attention and I look forward to having this commission board established much sooner than another few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Dick Blatchford. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Dick Blatchford, 3 Harrison Street. Dick Russell can't be here tonight, so I'm going to take a page out of his book. Arming our police with assault-type weapons was a big issue for some members of the council as well as the community. Certainly, events of the Boston Marathon dispel any question about them being properly armed. The bad guys had greater firepower and used it to kill and wound police officers and civilians. Both officers were shot with assault weapons, not pistols. Budgets. The only way you're going to get the mayor to pay any attention, and this is not derogatory against the police department, but to lower the police department budget when it comes to budget time by $320,000, the salary and benefits of the deputy chief and the two officers currently being paid, even though they're under indictment. If officers have to be laid off to cover indicted officer's salary, then it's squarely, and I mean squarely, on the mayor's shoulders. Remember, folks, those indicted officers are political cronies of the mayor. Again, the budget. Mayor's salary and his budget should be cut by 66 percent. The mayor's salary covers city issues, finance, and school leadership. The state is now responsible for finances for which we pay a salary and travel expenses to an overseer. I'm sure the state overseer will go away once we elect a new mayor. The schools are covered by the state takeover for which we pay a salary to the receiver. Once we get a new mayor who shows leadership, I'm sure the receiver will soon go away. The mayor claims he turned over the schools to the state, but everyone knows the state had told him they were coming in. That leaves 34 percent for ribbon cutting, and frankly, that's perhaps an overpayment. Finally, a question for our state lawmakers, not just Lawrence reps. When are you going to step in and help squash the madness going on in this city? Let's push the legal system and get this mayor finally indicted. The people of this city deserve better than questionable leadership, non-transparent government, and questions of corruption. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends public participation. These names will be submitted to the clerk's office to be archived. Counselor, I'd like to take two items out of order. I'm probably taking them as a block. Document 199 and document 74 as a block and out of order.
Counselor President, I'd like to make a motion to take document 199-10 and 74-09 as a block and out of order.
Any second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The IAs have a document 199-10 disposition. Recommend merge with document 74-09. Proposed sale of 128-132 Union Street, tax map 88, lot 27-28. After merging, it is approximately 8,600 square feet. Property consists of vacant land and is located at B2 commercial zoning. This item is proposed to sell to Lawrence Community Works for $30,000. Deciding came up from the Housing Committee. Madam Vice Chair from the Housing Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Please be with me because I wasn't expecting to do the committee report. But at the Housing Committee, we did have Mr. Burke present from the planning office. He did present on behalf of the applicant and it was for the two parcels. We did move to merge the documents at the committee level and we were told afterwards that they actually need to stay as two separate parcels until the final sale has proceeded. So I just want to note that for the record. I don't know if we need to make a vote on that.
Well, it came up with a favorable recommendation. We'll take the vote, we'll second, and then we'll amend it.
Okay, so the matter came up to recommend the documents to be merged, which I guess we do not want to do at this time.
We don't want to do that. But that's the committee report.
I understand. Thank you.
Point of inquiry. What's the document number?
It's document 199.
199-10. It's the very last document on page one.
Right on the bottom of the page, Counselor Toomey.
All right.
And 74 is on the other page. Continue, please.
Came up with a unanimous favorable recommendation to sell the property to Lawrence Community Works for a sum of $30,000 with the restrictions and conditions of sale. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second.
Second.
Second. Counselor Bernal with the amendments.
So the amendment is that we no longer merge the two documents. But it's the creation of one-two-family structure on the merged two lots on the property after it's developed.
So the amendment is to seller 199, which is, the address is 130-132, right?
Yep.
As standalone, correct?
No, it is going to be sold with 74, and the two properties, when they're merged, will be developed as one 9,569-square-foot parcel, but that's going to be after our vote. The only question I have, in my notes, I have 50,000, and this report says 30,000. So I just wanted to ask Mr. Burke if I'm off or his...
Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Burke.
Richard Burke, real property specialist, City of Lawrence, 200 Common Street or 225 Essex. The selling price for that parcel, or the two parcels, is $30,000.
That's for 74-09, which is 132 South Union, and 199, which is 128 South Union.
That's correct.
Or Union, excuse me, not South Union. Great. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
At the sale price of $30,000.
This vote will be just for one parcel, which is document 199, which is parcel 130-132.
132.
Okay. There's a motion on the table. It's amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the IAs have it. The other item is document 74-09 disposition.
I just don't know what the sale price would be on that other lot.
Correct. That's fine.
Yes, the city attorney's office has informed us that even though the two parcels should not be merged, but they can be sold for one price together, which is the intention of breaking those document numbers back out.
So I guess maybe, maybe I should have said to take them as a block, the 79-09 and the 199-10. 74-09 relates to 128 Union Street. 199-10 is 130-132 Union Street. And the two parcels in two different documents are being sold together for the $30,000.
Counselor LaPlante. Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, Council President. I just don't want to get into a jam where we do this transaction because there's no money exchanging hands.
That won't be a problem. This is at the request. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, I'm just concerned that we go through this whole process and we do this process, we take the votes we're supposed to take, but because there's no money exchanging hands for real estate that we're moving, we've specifically broken them apart now, that they may get down the road and get into a jam about ownership. I just want to make sure we don't create havoc by not doing something even as small as a dollar for the exchange of the real estate.
On the contrary, this is at the request of the city attorney's office because to create a new title, they need, those two lots needed to be treated separately, even though they're being sold in combination for the sale price of $30,000.
No, I get that part. My concern isn't about the separating them. My concern is about doing one of them as a vote without no money changing hands for real estate.
Actually, if you read the conditions of sale on the amended memo, it stipulates that each of them is being sold, each lot separately, is being sold for that sale price. So there is a dollar amount attached.
You're the expert.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
So through you, Council President, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the sale of 128 Union Street, which is document number 74-09, to Lawrence Community Works in conjunction with document number 199-10 for the combined sale price of the $30,000, subject to and conditioned upon those condition of sales listed in the memorandum. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Here, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. Counselor Toomey.
Yes, if I'm looking at this piece of paper correctly, there were two proposals submitted for this particular one. It was one from, I guess, Lawrence Community Works and then one from Bay Mag Valley Habitat for Humanity.
Yes.
And...
I think I know your question is why would we choose the Lawrence Community Works? Lawrence Community Works actually owned a third parcel at the site, and they'll have the ability to merge in that third parcel, which makes for much larger development. So when the full project is done, there'll be more land for less housing. The project with the Habitat was the same amount of housing on less land because they didn't have that third parcel to join in. So it made a lot more sense to better the neighborhood by having two houses built on one very large lot with two smaller lots, I mean two larger lots, excuse me, than the Habitat project with similar-sized housing on less land because they didn't have their own additional land to merge into it. That was the big variation.
Okay, there was the two lots equal 86,000 square feet, 8,600 square feet. Is that right?
Our two lots do.
Our two lots do. And how about the other one that Community Works has? They're going to merge with this?
I had in my notes that it combined to 12,000 approximately square feet. I don't have the exact...
I believe that's approximately correct.
I wasn't expecting to give the committee report for housing, but my notes did say combined to 12,000. So it'd be roughly two 6,000-square-foot lots, which would be pretty substantial-sized lots.
Okay, but I guess what I'm getting at, it's going to be, it's going to be set up as one single lot with 12,000 square feet. Is that right?
No, it is going to be split into two. It can merge three lots into two. So the final lots will be roughly 6,000 square feet each.
But what's going in, though?
Each will have a two-family home on it.
Each will have a two-family, one two-family home?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And the one that was submitted by Habitat for Humanity has two affordable, three-bedroom, energy-efficient, owner-occupied-style homes. That would have gone on the 8,600-square-foot lot by itself. So there will be another approximately 4,000-square-foot lot right next to us that Lawrence Community Works owns, right?
Yes, like three and a half, and they were already at eight and a half, so it got it up to about 12, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? There's a motion on the table. It's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the IAs have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go back up in order. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, document 292-12, operation of taxi... Oh, sorry about that. Counselor, I know Counselor Toomey called me earlier. He wanted me to take one item out of order for him. Document 135-13. Can I take that item out of order, please? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the IAs have it. Document 135-13. Resolution, Captain James Mulligan. Counselor Toomey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's an honor and a privilege for me to present this resolution for Captain James Mulligan, who was a Lawrence native and a captain in the United States Navy who was shot down over Vietnam and spent seven years as a prisoner of war. Captain Mulligan and his wife are currently in California with the rest of his family, attending a wedding. And tonight, I believe, one of his relatives is going to be here this evening. So I'll be presenting this at the podium.
Counselor Toomey.
State of Mulligan. Mr. Mulligan, are you a nephew?
Yes.
Kathleen Mulligan.
Sister. Through marriage, okay, thank you. We, the members of Lawrence City Council of Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby honor and service and achievement of Captain James Mulligan, United States Navy retired, and status follows. Whereas James Mulligan was born in Lawrence, Massachusetts, on March 27, 1926, where he lived with his family, was a member of St. Patrick's Parish, where he attended grammar school. Whereas he joined the United States Navy on February 9, 1944, as part of the V-5 program, receiving his wings in August 1947. In October 1948, he married Louise M. Colte, and together have raised six sons. Whereas during his 31-year military career, James Mulligan served in World War II, Korea, and Vietnam on 12 different carriers and accumulated over 5,000 flight hours with 650 carrier landings, more than 150 at night. Whereas on April 1, 1966, James Mulligan received his commission to be a commanding officer onboard the USS Enterprise, but was shot down on a mission near Vinh in North Vietnam on March 20, 1966, sustaining a broken shoulder and cracked ribs upon ejection while in flight, and was taken prisoner of the North Vietnamese, being held in captivity for nearly seven years, 2,522 days, of which 42 and 3/4 months were spent in solitary confinement and more than 30 months in legions at such locations as Hanoi Hilton, Heartbreak Hotel, and New Guy Village from March 27 to April 23, 1966; the zoo from April 23, 1966 to January 26, 1967; Las Vegas from January 26, 1967 to October 25, 1967; Alcatraz from October 25, 1967 to December 9, 1969; Las Vegas from December 9, 1969 to December 25, 1970; in Camp Unity or No-OK Corral, December 25, 1970 to February 12, 1973. Whereas on February 11, 1973, James Mulligan was released from captivity, and on February 14, 1973, he was the first prisoner of war cleared while released from Clark Air Force Base to the States, where he carried his prison drinking cup, which contained the names of 459 prisoners of war that he had either seen, heard, or was told had been taken alive by the North Vietnamese, committing these names to memory from a list built since his first days being held in North Vietnam. Whereas the military awards and honors received by Captain Mulligan include two Silver Hearts, two Silver Stars, the Legion of Merit, the Distinguished Flying Cross, four Bronze Stars, seven Air Medals, two Purple Hearts, the Combat Action Ribbon, the American Campaign Medal, the World War II Victory Medal, the Navy Occupation Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal with one star, the Vietnam Service Medal with three Silver and two Bronze Stars, the Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal, the Navy Expeditionary Medal, and the Quick Conduct Medal. Whereas Captain Mulligan retired from the United States Navy in 1975 after 31 and a half years of service and earned an MBA in public administration, and later worked and retired from his position as CEO of a large wholesale distributor of marble, slate, and granite. And whereas James Mulligan and his wife Louise presently live in Virginia, where they continue to enjoy their family. Wherefore, we, the members of Lawrence City Council for the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby honor Captain James Mulligan for his service to the United States, and join in recognizing and celebrating the 40th year since his release as a prisoner of war, and cause a seal of the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here too this 21st day of May in the year 2013, and signed by Counselor President Frank Moran, Counselor Vice President Daniel Rivera, Counselor Sandy Omonte, Counselor Mark LaPlante, Counselor Estella Reyes, Counselor Roger Toomey, Counselor Odaya Aquino, Counselor Iden Bernal, and Counselor Kendra Sacks West. And congratulations.
President Frank Moran and Counselor Toomey and all of the other counselors that are responsible for this resolution this evening, I would like to thank you for presenting such an honor to someone who suffered so much during this period of time. I can't tell you how appreciative Uncle Jim would be here tonight if he could have been. We are just thrilled that the City of Lawrence has rise to the occasion of giving such a presentation this evening. We all from the family, thank you so very much for such a wonderful resolution that you've presented. And I'd like to also, I'm Kathleen Mulligan. Uncle Jim is my husband's godfather, also my brother-in-law, Stephen Mulligan, nephew, and our cousin, Shaleen Shadnan, who really was so wonderful to ask for this of what you've given this evening. It is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor, I'd like to take document 306-5 out of order. So moved. Right here, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the IAs have it. Document 306-05, disposition 26-30, Milford Street, tax map 88, lot 57. Proposed sale to Lawrence Community Works for $50,000. Deciding came up from the Housing Committee. Madam Vice Chair from the Housing Committee. Madam Vice Chair from the Housing Committee?
Thank you, Counselor President. Similar to the last item, this was a proposal brought down before the Housing Committee at the Monday, May 13 meeting. It was a presentation by Mr. Richard Brown from the Planning Office, and the proposal was for Lawrence Community Works to put a-
The proposal was for Lawrence Community Works to put a two-family at this site. Just to anticipate, there was also a bid at that location by Habitat for Humanity, and that bid involved creating a four-family, and so the committee felt that because this was less density with a two-family than a four-family, that it was a better, higher use for the neighborhood. And it did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to allow that sale to Lawrence Community Works, and I don't have the sale price.
That is, that's for $50,000.
That's $50,000.
Perhaps that's what you were thinking of at the earlier vote.
Thank you, for the $50,000, subject to the conditions of sale listed in the memorandum, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Are you second? Any discussion?
Excuse me, before you take this vote, I respectfully ask that a vote that was taken, I believe in 2011, be rescinded before the vote is taken on this disposition. It was the same property. The previous buyer did not complete the sale. He frankly ran, ran behind on funding, and so had to withdraw from consideration. So that, that vote, earlier vote could be either rescinded or vacated before this one takes place. That will, that will make it much easier going forward.
Just a quick question. Didn't you know this at the, and I don't want to just hit on you early, but didn't you guys know this back when the Housing Committee, that this has to be done?
No, but it-
They didn't know that?
It didn't have to be done at Housing, it had to be done at the council because the final vote was approved by council.
I understand that, but the Housing Committee, they do all the, all the work, all the leg work down there, and it's always good for them to know what's going on instead of all of us finding about this, at this level.
This is something that we discovered rather late because we didn't realize that the vote, the vote had not been rescinded earlier, so I apologize for that.
Through you, Counselor President, just a point of information or a point of inquiry? The vote that we're rescinding, we should have some specifics, either the purchaser or the purchase price or the date or some combination. There we go, thank you.
It's the same, the same document number, as a matter of fact.
So it's, I can't read this, but. Would you mind? Thank you very much.
Counselors on May 3, 2011, upon motion of Counselor Plant, seconded by Counselor Rivera, the real property sold to Shaheen Properties LLC on the payment of $51,501, with stated conditions agreed upon. $51,501 and 1 cent.
Counselor Rivera?
Okay, so the motion before us is to, to approve the sale to the new owner at a $50,000 amount, but before that, we actually have to rescind the old motion to Shaheen Properties for $50,500.
But that's correct.
Did the city take, through you, Mr. President, did the city take payment of the $50,000?
No. So the sale, the sale was never completed.
Now, this could be hard for us not having any of that information before us until just now.
I was under the impression that it would have been kept with the, the record, the, with the, the document number.
Again, I just, I just want to make sure we don't do something that later down the line they go to the registry of deeds, and it's something that's not done right.
We were advised by the city attorney's office that this is how we had to proceed.
When?
Literally today.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This, this was never recorded on the registry of deed, correct?
No.
So there was never, no purchase sale agreement, there was no? So this was just an offer, this has just been, okay.
That's right.
Madam Chair, we need to, the motion.
So, would draw my prior motion or just?
No, you can leave that one.
Leave it floating. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we rescind the May 3, 2011 vote of the council to sell this property at 26-30 Milford Street to Shaheen Properties for the amount of $51,501 and 1 cent, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Do you hear second?
Second.
Mr. Clerk, repeat the motion just to make sure we're all record.
Motion by Counselor Burnell is to rescind the vote of Council of May 3, 2011, awarding property by motion and seconded to Shaheen.
Shaheen Properties?
Is it Shaheen? I'm reading Shaheen, that's my handwriting. Shaheen Properties LLC for the payment of $51,501 with stated conditions. Motion was seconded by Counselor Reyes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Chair, motion to, looking for, well, we already have a motion to sell the property for $50,000 to Lawrence Community Works. There's a motion on the table, it's been second. Any discussion?
Again, too, there was another proposal from Mary McValley Habitat for Humanity.
I apologize, I think because there was so much conversation in between, what I had said earlier was that the Lawrence Community Works proposal is to build one two-family on this lot, and the Habitat for Humanity is to build two two-families or four units on the same parcel. So they had thought that the less dense two-family was better than the four families, so that's why they had gone with the LCW project.
What I'm looking at here, the proposals for Lawrence Community Works, construction of two-family homes, consistent of a three-bedroom ownership unit and a two-bedroom rental unit with four off-street parking spaces and landscaped green spaces.
Yeah, so it's like a two-family.
Pardon me?
It's one structure with a two-family in it.
Construction of two-family home, which is one home, consistent of three bedrooms, and Habitat wants two affordable, three-bedroom, energy efficient, owner occupied homes. And what was the reason why?
The Habitat proposal is actually for two, two-family homes, and the LCW proposal is for one two-family home.
It's on a lot size of?
Same lot size.
Almost 10,000 square feet?
Yeah, it's 9,569. So it's, it's half the density, though.
Construction of two, of two-family home, what's that mean? Maybe, maybe I'm reading this wrong. Consistent of three-bedroom ownership unit and two-bedroom rental units. So it's going to be one building?
That's correct.
It's going to be one building?
One building.
It's going to be split, what, half or something?
It'll be, yes, the one half will be owner occupied and the other one will be a rental.
It'll be like a duplex.
Essentially, yes.
Essentially duplex. And Habitat is two affordable, single homes, three bedrooms each.
Yes.
Was the Habitat, through you, Mr. Counsel President, they have, I'm understanding was that Habitat proposal was actually like basically two duplexes?
That's correct.
And the LCW was one duplex.
Right.
Well, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this now. Thank you.
Anybody else? There's a motion on the table, it's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Plant noted, Counselor Toomey?
No.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Omonte noted, Counselor Kino?
Yes.
Counselor Burnell?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President Rivera?
Yes.
And Counselor President Moran?
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is document, going back up to public hearings, document 292-12, operation of taxi and liberty vehicles in Lawrence, authorization and regulation of Mr. Clerk. Please read the notice.
Document 292 of 2012. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 21, 2013, in the council chambers, 200 Clonan Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendments that revise ordinances for the City of Lawrence to be amended by deleting the following sentence of Section 548.920 of Municipal Code authorizing to arrest and seize evidence. Any police officer witnessing a violation of Section 5.48.910 may arrest the driver of the vehicle and seize evidence of said violation, and inserting in its place instead the following new sentence. Any police officer witnessing a violation of Section 548.910 may arrest the driver of the vehicle, tow the vehicle, and seize evidence of said violation. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published.
Public hearing is not open. Anybody wish to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Peter Caruso, I'm an attorney. I have offices at 68 Main Street in Andover, and tonight I represent 24 licensed taxi cab owners of, in Andover, who are Lawrence residents. We're here tonight because over the past several weeks, 21 taxi cabs have been stopped, the passengers audited out, and taxi cabs towed. That's been without this resolution that's before the council tonight. As I understand it, after speaking with the police chief and speaking with the council, city council, I rely upon an amendment that was passed back in December that would allow that taxi cabs be seized. Now, seized is, is a common term in law for when you have an incident such as a drug raid, or you have a theft, and you seize the needles and the drugs, or you seize the theft items, and you put them in a secure place to be used for trial. That's seizure. Towing, on the other hand, is not a complete, a, a, a complete taking of the particular article. However, these taxi cab owners who are licensed in Andover have had their cars towed. I want to give one incident which is shocking to me and to all the people I've spoken to. The taxi cab driver who's licensed picked up a fare in Methuen, and he was dispatched to drop that fare off on Sutton Street in North Andover. Now, to get from Methuen to North Andover, and I grew up just three blocks away on Southern Street, and in order to get from Methuen to North Andover, you have to go through Lawrence. So when he crossed the Duck Bridge, the police officer stopped him, ordered the passengers out, fined him $500, and towed the car. And the driver said, well, no, no, you don't understand, I'm taking the passenger from Methuen to North Andover. Well, by saying that, he got arrested, disorderly conduct. So I think what the intent of the council was, was admirable. I think what you tried to do, what you're trying to do is to protect a business in Lawrence. What I'm saying, what I'm telling you here, standing here tonight, the 24 taxi cab drivers, all residents of Lawrence, who are licensed in Andover, have been servicing Lawrence residents, some for 20 years, some for eight years, some for four years. And now they can't service, with the amendment that came about in December, Lawrence residents. Actually, that's not true. The resident, the, the amendment that you had in December allowed them to pick up residents if they're dispatched. In other words, if they could show that the call came from Lawrence to the dispatch office in Andover, then they can pick that person up. That amendment has since been amended. And now, and, and, and that particular audit, by the way, tracked what Boston has, and tracked what other communities have. But what you did then, back in April, you removed the provision that stated that if they're called, that, actually what it says is that, if you read it, no taxi cabs are allowed in Lawrence unless they're licensed by Lawrence, which means that if a taxi cab from Boston, Cambridge, Chelsea, Revere, Lynn, all who have licensed, would come into Lawrence, they would be stopped, passengers removed, and fined $500, and towed. Now, I don't think, I don't believe that that was the intent of the ordinance, but that's what it reads, and that's the way the police department has been enforcing the ordinance for the past several weeks. And as I say this, and I just want to briefly say that the intent of the ordinance back in 2006 was admirable, and in fact, to cap, to cap the amount of permits is legal in Massachusetts. So I think, and people are saying, well, Peter, you can't cap it. Yes, you can cap it, but what they're saying, the courts have said nationally, and just recently, and I've given the case to the city, on April 16, that if you cap permits, taxi cab permits, this Milwaukee case, and Denver and, and Portland, every year, you should take a second look at it, and say, gee, if we capped it at 150, should it be 160? Should it be 170? Should it be lower? But the city has not reviewed this 150 cap since 2006. That's why the courts are going to say that it is irrational and arbitrary and anti-competitive. Not my words, those are words. In fact, Milwaukee called it a cartel, because they're stuck, the 150 cap is now stuck. If you look at it, you can rationalize it, and then you'll make it legitimate. Now, I have 25 taxi cabs, 24 live in Lawrence. They've been doing this now for, for, since 2006, right up until 2000, right up until December 2012. They are flooded with work. That should tell the council, and that should tell the people of Lawrence, that there's a need, that maybe it should be raised, the cap should be raised. But to penalize those taxi cab drivers that are licensed in other states from being dispatched when they're called from Lawrence to come in and pick up a Lawrence resident who wants to be picked up, that's where the unconstitutionality comes in. That's where the Civil Rights, Article 1, and the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, which sounds way overhead, but it's true, that you can't, that the equal protection and civil rights of people who want to start a business, earn an honest living, can't be stopped by a capped, a capped system. Now, I'm here tonight because prior to 2000, December 4, 2012, the ordinance was pretty good. But what you did then is you said, well, no, you, you could only be dispatched from Lawrence. So they, they did that. On April 4, what you said was, no taxi cabs can come into Lawrence. And that created a barbed wire fence around the city. Don't think it was intentional, but that's what happened. Now, I've spoken to both, again, the police chief from Arrow, and I've spoken to your council, and about the towing issue, because that's the real big issue. It cost $145 because they towed the car, kind of ironically, from Lawrence to Lawrence, and it's not really a seizure if 10 minutes later, you can go and pick your car up. It costs you $145. So it's not really a seizure, but that's what's been happening regularly, even though I've written letters and met. So I think it's an enforcement issue that the council and the, and the citizens need to be aware of. Now, you know, when you tow a vehicle, it's tough enough, and some actual courts have said towing a vehicle is actually taking a person's right away without judicial edict or without any type of reason. If you're parked in front of a, if you're parked in a handicap spot, if you're parked in front of a fire hydrant, if you're blocking traffic, fine, you tow the vehicle. If it's a legally licensed vehicle, pass all the inspection with a legally licensed driver who's not being arrested but just being fined, why tow the vehicle? There's no justification. Now, also, and I've submitted this to the city and to some counselors, when the police officers stop a, a Lawrence resident who's licensed in Andover, they say things such as, get out of this city, don't come back, I'm personally going to take out all of the end of taxis myself. You need to leave the city immediately. I will make any excuse to get a warrant to come and arrest the dispatchers at your Andover office. You're not even allowed to cross through Lawrence, because these are people who live in Lawrence, these Lawrence residents. The fellow who was crossing the Duck Bridge, who lives in Lawrence, the police stated, you cannot even be in Lawrence. Now, when the, now, when the, the driver said, well, can I explain where I'm coming from, the quote was, if you don't shut up, I'm going to arrest you.
These are speculation, I mean, you have proof that that happened, I mean, what you're saying is somebody's word against another.
Okay.
So this is just-
I'm going to tell you what kind of proof I have. I, I have-
Okay.
I have...
This is a driver's telling you that he's...
I have an affidavit filed in the United States District Court, federal court in Boston, that's signed on the pains and penalty of perjury that these statements occurred. These are, because we were unable to get a resolution, we have sued the city, hopefully in Superior Court across the street. However, this morning, the city of Lawrence removed the case that I was trying to talk to the court about the towing, and they removed it to United States District Court in Boston. It is now a federal civil rights case. So now the city of Lawrence has a federal civil rights case removed by the city of Lawrence to federal court. So we do have, President, we do have affidavits signed on the pains and penalty of perjury that these statements occurred by the residents. So that's the evidence that we have. We also have two or three witnesses. Now, we've also met, so you say, "Want to meet with the, the city." So we met with Lieutenant Conway of the Lawrence Police Department, who is now the acting safety officer. That's when only five cars were towed. Lieutenant Conway explained that they would continue to pull over any and all vehicles that were not from Lawrence, Boston, Cambridge, although they're not picking up any other vehicles. And we all know some limousine services that work in the, in the Lawrence area that have not been touched, that have not been targeted, that have not been towed, that have not been stopped.
Point of, where are you getting that they haven't been stopped or towed? Do you know that for a fact?
I do not know that any have.
Yeah. So don't say that. We know for a fact that they have been targeting those groups for a long time.
Okay.
Speculation.
I don't know of one, I don't know of one, and I've been asking of our, of our drivers, of our residents, of one that's been towed, and I don't know. If you know of one...
Sure, I do.
Counselor Brenel, thank you.
With all due respect, do you know where you are?
Pardon?
You're in the Lawrence City Council.
Yes.
We look out for the best interest of the Lawrence businesses. You are here advocating for a business outside of the city. We represent Lawrence businesses, Lawrence residents, so you know where you are. And I know you're here advocating for a business outside of Lawrence. I just want you to know that, just to remind you that you know where you are.
I am three blocks away from where I grew up. I know exactly where I am.
Stand there. But you know who you represent?
I also know that the people that I represent are all Lawrence residents. They all live in Lawrence. So I represent people who earn a living, support a family, pay taxes in the city of Lawrence, and they can't get a permit in Lawrence. And the reason why they can't get a permit in Lawrence is because it's capped at 150. So the penalization of that is, if you come into the city with a taxi cab, then you're going to get towed, and they're going to be taken away. Now, I'm just going to, just for the council's benefit, because I know that you took the ordinance from Boston, and the ordinance before December 4th, by the way, allowed what every other city in the Commonwealth allows, but you took that away. Cambridge has an ordinance that says, "It is a violation of the city of Cambridge Hackney rules and regulations for an out-of-town taxi to pick up fares in Cambridge." The one exception to the rule is if the fare called the out-of-town taxi cab and audited the pickup of Cambridge, in Cambridge. That's the exception. Now, that exception is the same exception that you had in your ordinance up until April 4th of this year. So you had that type of an exception, but you took it out. So what you did is you prevented all businesses, Lawrence businesses, I mean, just because, you know, you're a Lawrence resident, not, not every business can be located in Lawrence. If every, not every single person who lives in Lawrence has a business in Lawrence, but they're still going to do business in Lawrence. And all I'm saying is that these are Lawrence residents. These are people who are called by Lawrence residents. They come back into Lawrence, and they've been doing this. I guess what I'm really, and I have a national court, this has been happening from 2006 right up until December 2012 with no incidents at all, with Lawrence residents being supported, these businesses in organization, and then suddenly, in December of 2012, you've taken away their business rights and their rights to earn a living. Now, just to address tonight's particular towing provision, there has not been a towing provision in the ordinance until the proposal before you tonight. However, 21 vehicles have been towed. They have no, there's no justification for that. I have requested the court to look at the amendments, not, you know, not the, but the amendments that have been, that have been proposed or that have been passed, and the amendment that was going to be posed tonight on the towing. And that was going to be heard across the street at 2:00 this afternoon until the removal action was filed at quarter of 12 by the city. The action, for the council's benefit, the action is now in federal court in Boston, and there's a hearing scheduled at 2:00 PM on Thursday, which we have a motion for a preliminary injunction to not have the enforcement of the amendments to the ordinance because we feel that they are a violation, a constitutional violation of due process and the right to earn a living, which is guaranteed on both the constitutions of the Massachusetts and the United States. The court has in fact scheduled that motion, so that motion is scheduled for 2:00 on, on Thursday. Now, I'd like to end by saying that I think that this is an opportunity for the, for the city council to use its powers as a corrective, as a corrective measure, not as a punitive force, not to blame, not to become part of the taxi situation that we have now, but to find ways to fix the taxi system here in Lawrence, to protect its residents who want to earn an honest living, and to accommodate your constituents who want their services at a price that they can afford. Again, these are licensed taxi cab drivers. They cannot get a permit here in Lawrence. It's capped, and I think we all know that the 150 permits, about 68 are held by one company, 50 by another company, 15 by another company. So there are these small, what the court in Milwaukee has called taxi cartels, not my word, but the court in Milwaukee has called taxi cartels.
I know you're making those generous statements. Do you know that the person that you are representing used to own about 10 of them before?
He owned three before the...
You saw more than that?
Yes.
I'm just letting you know. And do you know that while he had a business in Andover, he had an office on West Street, operated on a West Street with an Andover address? Do you know that?
Is there a problem?
Legally.
No, is there, is there a problem with that? I'm just asking. I mean, is it, can someone, he's legally licensed?
Absolutely.
But is there...
I'm just, I'm just, just to know if you knew this information.
Well, I do, but I don't know what's illegal about having a business in Lawrence or Andover if you're a licensed taxi cab driver. I think you earn a living.
I think the problem to you becomes, do the cabs from Andover, which don't have Lawrence medallions, start operating in Lawrence because they're all under the same ownership and under the same dispatcher? Then in effect, you have non-Lawrence medallion cabs picking up in Lawrence. It defeats the whole purpose and benefit of the medallion system. I think that's really what started this whole problem.
The medallion system, both in Lawrence and in Boston, and in Cambridge, and other cities, and in Lynn, and in Revere, will not allow an out-of-town licensed taxi cab driver to pick up a fare in Lawrence. They can, they can't be hailed, they can't be picked up. However, if a Lawrence residence, a Lawrence resident on Fern Street calls a taxi cab driver, a taxi cab dispatcher in Andover, and asks for that cab to pick them up, at least in America, what's wrong with that? What's wrong with having someone from Lawrence call a taxi cab driver in Andover and pick them up? You can't be hailed, and you can't do that in Boston, you can't do that in Cambridge. This is the only city in the Commonwealth, and I've checked ordinances, that has that. Now, you didn't have that. You had that exception up until December 4th, and you removed it. And now you want to tow the vehicles. Let me tell you, because it was removed to Boston, and because it's a 1983 action, all the costs involved, if in fact it's found to be unconstitutional, will have to be paid, you know, by the city. I tried to avert that. I tried to talk to the police chief, talk to the city, and the cabs were still being towed, and the passengers audited out. Now, when they're audited out, by the way, it's the police department, the police officer that calls another company, not the passenger who has a cell phone, but the police officer, "Wait a minute, let me call this cab, this cab company." So the officer stops the cab, removes the passengers, finds them, tow's the cab, and then calls another taxi company to pick them up. The councils, I believe, should know that. So again, I'm not here to really challenge the cap of 150. I think that you should have meetings to see whether or not that cap should be adjusted. But I am here for the towing, for the fining, and, and for the harassment that's being for any out-of-town cab driver that has absolutely nowhere to be found in any, any other city of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, except here in Lawrence. Any questions?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, City Council. Lieutenant Sean Conway, Special Operations Division. I'm also the OIC of the Hackney Division. I oversee the medallions in the city of Lawrence. I can't comment on Attorney Caruso's statements concerning matters that are dealing internally with the police department, whether it's officers saying things or doing things. That has to be handled, the chief doesn't want us handled here. It's definitely handled inside. So if there's, there is an issue with that, I would recommend that Attorney Caruso go to the station, have that person file a complaint with the Internal Affairs Division, and let Sergeant DeFusco proceed with the investigation. I can tell you this, the actions that we've taken so far since this ordinance passed was based on speaking with the city attorney. We have, we towed, Attorney Caruso's saying 21 vehicles. I don't know, I'd have to look at the tow log. But everything that we've done, that I've seen, we've done in accordance with the city attorney's office, in accordance with the city council ordinance that you, that the board has passed. I think that holding the cap at 150 at this point, I know I spoke to Counselor Brenel and Council President Moran about this, where we, I only have one person doing this job, three, four hours a day, if I'm lucky. This isn't somebody in there for 40 hours a week. We had a sergeant doing it, then, and then he made deputy chief, and he was able to address this. And we had a larger police department. The manpower issues aren't there. 150, I think, is a manageable number right now for us. And there were questions about medallions, and who owns medallions, and what companies own them. Most companies, most people that have owned them have been the ones that have owned them since, since I took over in November. There hasn't been a sale that I know of or a transfer of a medallion since then. I know some of the councils have requested the paperwork, and I've given it to them. But I, you know, I'll answer any and all, and all questions with that. I like the fact that the ordinance, as it stands right now, protects the Lawrence cab drives, protects the residents of the city of Lawrence. It gives us the opportunity to stop the cars, talk to the passengers, make sure they're safe, talk to the driver, make sure they're safe. A cab company from another town, I don't, I don't know what their ordinances are. I can tell you this, I called the Andover Police Department out of courtesy and asked them to please tell these guys, "There's a new city ordinance. They've got to adhere by it." Officer Regula went over there, had the email, that he spoke with the owner, said that they would, that they would do it. Guys were out here, they were protesting. A few weeks ago, I went over and talked to them, I invited them all back to my office. Several of them came down there. I explained to them what was going on there. As for this court case, the reason why it's in federal court is the city attorney, Bill DiAtomo, recommended that it could be moved down to federal court in Boston, based on it's a federal case out of Milwaukee. I believe that case is involving more of reduction of medallions from 800 to 500. So you're looking at, you know, 300, 300 medallions being reduced. I leave that to Attorney Caruso. He's, he's the expert on, on the law, and I'm a, I'm a layman. But I can answer any and all questions you have. But I cannot get into actual cases of police officers saying things or doing things. I'm sorry, that's just the department policy, that that should be conducted internally.
Yeah, but I mean, we cap everything. I mean, let's be honest, everything gets capped. Liquor licenses are capped.
Right.
Car dealer licenses are capped.
Right.
Why is medallions, taxi medallions any different than liquor license and everything else? We cap everything. For rightfully so.
Right. I think that there's, there's two factors here. One, the alcohol beverage control, I'm very familiar with this, that number is controlled by the state itself per capita. We can adjust it down, we cannot go above it. So that, that's why the number holds where it's at there. The medallions, I don't know how they came up with 150, but they came up with it, and right now, it's an extremely manageable number for us. 150 cabs with 380 some odd drivers, that's as of three weeks ago, four weeks ago, that's a lot of work, plus people coming in constantly applying for Hackney license. We're always doing that. There's always problems. The cab companies are talking to us, or we're bringing them in, or we've received complaints about them. It's a constant flow of work, and I only have one guy doing it part-time, three, four hours a week, because we just don't have the manpower on the, at the police station.
Do you have a list of people that already apply, waiting, on the waiting list? Do you have a waiting list?
I don't have anybody that I know of on any type of a waiting list applying for a medallion, because all our medallions are out. They're all rented from us. Nobody owns these. These are owned by the city of Lawrence. They rent them from us. And as vendors, I can, I classify them as a vendor, that's my term. You know, we hold them to strict adherence, to expectations a year, cars that are damaged, we make them repaired, and I hold them extremely accountable, as I did, as I do with bars and alcohol establishments.
Thank you. You need me to sit down? Yosef?
I'm all set.
Anybody else on this issue before I call the question? Name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Ronge, 32 Drakehead Street. I really wasn't going to say anything here at this meeting tonight, but don't the cab companies in Lawrence, don't they go pick up people with the Methuen Market Basket? Don't they go pick up people with the Kohl's? I mean, it looks to me like you're just going to start a big, lots of bad feelings, you know, bad situation locally here.
Anybody else? No, public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Tooney, the Counselor Vasquez, the Counselor Brenel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The way I read this, we have to vote this evening, basically, to kind of clear up statements within the, within the ordinance to allow the police officers to tow the vehicle. That wasn't stated before. As far as...
Well, it says seized before, seized.
It says seized, well, it still says...
Yeah, well, I mean, that, if you look at it...
No, it, it says...
Attorneys, they'll, they'll word things different. Technically, they use it to the best of their advantage. They use that wording whichever is going to benefit to them.
But it still says, "Tow the vehicle and seize evidence of said violations." So they're adding, "And tow the vehicle." So we're just clearing up the ordinance, is what I understand. Now, the ordinance is already in place.
Correct.
Yes.
It is as it is. Okay, so we're just here today to vote on whether we want to add the, the three words, "Tow the vehicle," to the, to the ordinance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to thank both, you know, all three individuals that came before us to speak on this particular subject, which is very important to the community of Lawrence. I am personally in strong support of what we're voting on tonight, and the reason being is because I have very high respect for the 380 or so drivers that we currently have in the city of Lawrence. As was mentioned by the attorney representing the company in Andover, there's 150 medallions. And based on the conversation previously with taxi owners in the city of Lawrence, those taxis go on for three shifts, meaning that there's approximately 450 opportunities to do business, 450 opportunities of employment. If we have approximately 330 employed today, 380 drivers today, that means that there's still 70 shift available for 70 drivers to be able to obtain, you know, licensed or an opportunity to be driving within the city of Lawrence and adhere by what we are proposing. There's 24 who have decided to do business outside of the city, which is great. I think that we should all look for opportunities where, where it will benefit the most for, you know, personally and our families. But it is not because there's not an opportunity in the city. And I think that we have to make that very clear. We have approximately 70 shifts available for anyone who would like to be a taxi driver within the city of Lawrence. The 24 individuals have decided to pursue a career outside of the city. You know, I admire that. I think that that's great. I think that anyone who wishes to do that, I applaud their, their... I applaud their efforts. But I don't think that is because of the lack of opportunity in the city. We have 70, approximately 70 opportunities for those to do those businesses. You know, with all the respect of the company from Andover, this is not, and I think it's important to clear that up, this is not targeting anyone or any individual company whatsoever. It is an ordinance to protect, and I repeat myself, protect the interests of businesses in our city, which is what we, as counselors, are meant to do. Protect the interests of the citizens of Lawrence and the businesses within our city. We are not targeting anyone. One of the speakers who came last said that we are able to, you know, a Lawrence taxi driver is able to pick up someone outside of the city? Of course, because there's not an ordinance elsewhere. If we, if a person in Logan Airport were to call a taxi driver from Lawrence, guess what? They would not be able to go pick them up. They would not be able to pick them up. Why? Because we have responsible taxi drivers that understand that when there's an ordinance elsewhere, they have to respect it. Or else they have to go by, you know, abide by the consequences that might come up. If I'm at Logan Airport, I would not be able to call someone from outside of Boston. I have to take one of the caps available there and go to my destination. I think it is clear that you have to adhere by the laws in each community. And in this case, we have proposed something that it is to defend the interests of our businesses, and I stand strongly on this. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone, for sharing your opinion.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just want to clarify something that was said earlier by one of the speakers, and I apologize for interrupting. I know that's not appropriate. But my clarification is, we do have other companies in the city that the police department has worked hand-in-hand with us to rectify issues with, specifically the mentioning of a New Hampshire livery company acting as a cab. I have that situation in my district. I've worked with the Lawrence Police Department vigorously to work on that. We've literally staked them out for 30 days and drove in. So, I mean, to say that we don't target the New Hampshire livery, that is a problem. That's absolutely not true, and we do work on other. So to say that this is only targeting one company is false. So I just want to make sure that, for the record. Secondly, some discussion of the use of the word seize or seizure. Seize and seizure are two different words. So just let's keep that in mind. And they have the right to seize evidence. Seize means to stop. When something's seized, it is stopped physically. If you look in Massachusetts general laws, when our state police tow vehicles, they use the word seize. They don't use the word tow in Mass. general law. So I just want to say, there's more than one use of that word, and I believe that our current usage is not necessarily inaccurate. However, if an attorney is going to give our police department a hard time over semantics, I'm going to support our police department and make a modification. I would call this modification more of a belt and suspenders than a true correction. I don't think there's anything wrong with the word that we chose. However, if this makes the life of our police department easier, then I'm going to support the police department and make their lives easier. I just want to clarify for the record. This isn't my ordinance. I do chair the ordinance committee. This wasn't brought to me by my constituents. I didn't sponsor the ordinance originally. I didn't sponsor any of the amendments to it. And as it was pointed out, the question before us tonight isn't, is this amendment okay or not? Our city attorney's told us that it is all right, and he's fighting in the courts because he believes it's all right. But that being said, the question before us tonight is just adding in one word, towing, which benefits the Lawrence Police Department by having that one word in there. That is why I support this amendment. I want to do what best supports our police department. Thank you.
Anybody else? No, this motion to the table has been second. And before I do that, because I, just because you mentioned that you didn't put this ordinance in place, I put this ordinance in place because this taxi cab company's owners came before me two and a half years ago and addressed the issue. And I think it was an issue that needed to be looked at, needed to be addressed, and it took two and a half years. Not just two months, three months, like most people sit out there. It took about two and a half years just to figure these things out. We don't want to hurt people that live in Lawrence and make a living. This is not about hurting them. This is about protecting the businesses of this community. A constitutional law allows cities and towns to regulate themselves. This is something I think most attorneys that are out there and exercising their careers know, that every city and towns have the ability to regulate themselves. And this is a regulation of the city of Lawrence, and I believe that there's not much of a case here, I think, but otherwise. I just want to make sure that one issue doesn't go unnoticed, because there was a comment made by one of the speakers. It says that our police department are mistreating people, making speculations and words like that, saying that our police department mistreaten drivers. That's uncalled for. If you don't know it, if you don't have evidence, don't make a statement like that. You know, I believe in our police department. I think they're very professional. They do their jobs every day, and we commend them for what they do. So this motion to the table has been second.
Counsel President?
Yes?
I just wanted to make actually a friendly amendment to the proposal. The proposed change was that any police officer witnessing a violation of Section 5.48.910 may arrest the driver of the vehicle, tow the vehicle, and seize evidence of said violation. What I wanted to ask was if we would just change it from being "and" to having it read "and/or", just, I believe widens the opportunities for the police department. It just gives them more options. So rather than have it read "and", have it read "and/or".
Got it.
I second that.
Second. This motion to the table was amended. It was second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. I'm looking for a motion to waive the 30-day grace period, counselors.
So moved.
So here's second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document 66-13, Handicap Parking, 7 Wilmont Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 66-2013. Notice is here by giving the city council hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 21, 2013, in Council Chambers, 200 Commons Street, Lawrence, Mass. at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the handicap parking ordinance to be inserted in proper order. Wilmont Street East Side from .85 feet northerly of the intersection of Irving Ave to .105 feet northerly of the intersection of Irving Ave. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded. The opportunity is published on May 14.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No, public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda...
I just meant to ask if we can waive the 30 days.
Sure. Is that a motion?
Yes. Can I make a motion to waive the 30 days?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is appropriation orders and resolution, document 55-12, appropriation, re-proposed to balance of 802,107.14 retained earnings from water and sewer expenditure to 1,390,498. Sewer repair deciding to come up from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee and to re-appropriate a balance of 802,107 dollars from water retained earnings from a previous expenditure that we made. So basically, this motion is not new money, but old money that we appropriated already, to re-appropriate it. And this money will go to, I think if you look in your documents, over the third page in this document, a Lowell Street sewer replacement, a pump station renovation at Pilgrim Road. The Lowell Street sewer replacement is at margin in Oxford Street. The infiltration inflow investigation, that's about $100,000. And the water system improvements that are miscellaneous, some which to include water flow and pressure, that should all total to $802,000. And this was sent up with a unanimous favorable recommendation. I do that as a formal motion.
I hear second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 125, appropriation, transfer from fire department salaries and wages to motor vehicle, 77,487. Deciding to come up from the Budget and Finance Committee to order a public hearing. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee. It was to take $77,487 from salaries and wages and put them into the fire department motor vehicle. And this was sent up with a two-to-one vote to order a public hearing, and I do that as a formal committee report.
Just to accept the...
Correct.
To accept the order of public hearing.
Committee report in general?
This one, okay.
Yeah, because it's neither...
All right.
It's because the motion was sent up two-to-one, and I was not one of the ones that voted for it. I just want to make a committee report that it was sent up.
This is a motion to accept the committee report?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Chair.
I think this is probably the point, just as a point of order, if somebody might want to make a motion to accept the matter.
I would like to make a motion to accept.
Second.
This is to order a public hearing?
Yes. To order a public hearing?
Is it to accept and order a public hearing?
Not to...
To order a public hearing. Okay. Oh, yeah.
Motion to the table has been second to order a public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah. The reason why I voted for against the law, and why I'm voting against it again, is that in a time when we have an impending problem with the firefighters and paying for their salaries and keeping fire department open in different places in the city, it would be seen strange to me that we would take almost $80,000 and buy a vehicle, even though the vehicle is in need of repair. I think that we'd rather have a body and not the truck. So that's why I'm voting against it.
Well, this is just to order a public hearing. This is not to accept.
Correct.
Okay. This motion to the table has been second to order a public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
No.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
No.
Counsel Brunel?
Yes.
Counsel Aquino?
Yes.
Counsel Monte nodded. Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante nodded. Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
Counsel President Moran?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is committee report, 48 Handicap Parking, 15 Utah Street. Deciding to come up from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. At the May 9 meeting of the ordinance committee, we did move on this item. It did come back from the police department with a favorable recommendation. I just want to point out to the committee that there is not a placard on file, and it did come up from the committee to approve it despite the lack of a placard, because the person has a handicapped van that picks up their adult child for services. So they need the, to keep this moving, it's the van, really, that needs the accommodation. They need to get that van up to the curb for the child. So despite the lack of a placard, and they are applying for it, we want to move this ahead at this time. Counsel.
Yes.
So Reyes?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to meet up with the applicant yesterday, and at this point, what she wants to do, she knows that she has some kind of documents that is pending. But at this point, what she's looking is just to table it, because she's also thinking to move at a this address. So whenever she's ready, she say that she's going to let us know. So can I make a formal motion?
Is she, is she moving anytime soon, or she is?
Yes.
Motion to table?
I hear second.
Second.
All those in favor to table say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 90, Transfer Render License, Francisca Medina.
Through you, Mr. President.
Look at this, right one.
With all due respect, would it be wise to actually withdraw that document just in case she resubmits? It's going to be at a different address.
No, because we can table and amend it.
And amend it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least she doesn't have to go through the whole, going back down to the ordinance committee and...
Okay.
It just makes it easier. She has a handicapped child. We can accommodate her.
Just wanted to make sure that we followed the right process, but if that's not true.
I think this one is right.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Document 90, Transfer Render License, Francisca Medina deciding to come up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just in looking at this, and I apologize if I'm wrong, but I'm going to defer to my committee members for a second.
Excuse me.
In my notes, I don't have this coming before us. Is the applicant here?
Again.
Yeah.
I'm doing my homework.
Good.
Okay. So they called me today, and they just want to pass this mess along with, they have a family emergency, they have some kind of issue, and they out of town. This is not a new license. This is a renewed one. So if all the papers are in orders, I don't know if we can, I mean, which I think it is, do you think we can take a vote on that, or they really need to be present?
The paperwork is definitely in order, and I apologize. What I usually do is, anyone that's at the meeting, we highlight it, and then we make it. I just didn't have that one highlighted. I didn't think they were at the meeting, but they were at the meeting.
Yes, I do remember this particular document.
Thank you. I apologize.
Yet the person was there.
Going with the...
Yeah, we took a vote on it.
Yeah. Recollection of my younger and better memory colleagues, I'm going to say it came up from the ordinance with unanimous favorable recommendation. The paperwork is in front of us right now, and it is definitely in order. I see the sign-offs from everyone from the fire department to the Mass DOT for the vehicle. Police department has signed off. All of the stamps are here from the different departments, inspection of water and tax. Everything's in order. So I would move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those in favor have it. Next item on the agenda is document 102, Iglesia Monte de Oración requests permission to the Ocano Park to hold a religious event on June 8 from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Madam Chair, I'm not sure if you might want to take this as a block.
Yeah, that would be great.
Document 102, 103, 104, 105, 106. I'm looking for a motion to take document 102 to 106 as a block.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Document 102, Iglesia Monte de Oración requests permission to use the Ocano on June 8 from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. They also want to use the Cronin Park on June 22 from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. They want to use the Sullivan Park on July 6 from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. They request to use the Kennedy Park to hold religious event on July 20 from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Permission to use the Cronin Park again on August 3 from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. All this signing came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. At the May 9 meeting of the ordinance committee, a representative from the Iglesia Monte de Oración did appear before us. They did have the requisite request for those different sites at those times, and paperwork was in order, and it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve, and I make that in the form of a motion.
I hear second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, actually, Counsel, I'd like to take document 91 out of order.
I make a motion to take 9113 out of order.
I hear second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Document 91, Lawrence High School Campus Scholarship. Deciding to come up from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Counsel President, this item was before the Budget and Finance Committee. It was sent up, it's the annual acceptance or allowance of the Lawrence High School Campus Scholarship check to be given out, and this was sent up with a unanimous favorable recommendation. I do that as a formal motion.
I hear second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 107, Old Gold Dealer License, Idalia Flores, 9 Broadway. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Counsel President. Again, at the Thursday, May 9 meeting of the ordinance committee, Idalia Flores did appear before the ordinance committee for renewal of an existing Old Gold Dealer license. The paperwork was all in order, and it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to renew, and I make that in the form of a motion.
I hear second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 108, Assembly of Christian Church requests permission to use the Companion Park to hold religious services on July 6 from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Signing came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Counsel President, if you could indulge us, maybe we could take document 10813 and 10913 as a block?
So moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
President, the ayes have it. Document 109, Saint Church just requests permission to use the Companion Park on August 10 from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Counsel President. At the Thursday, May ninth meeting of the ordinance committee, representative from the church did appear. Their paperwork was all in order, and it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve that use, and I make that in the form of a motion.
This is for one oh eight and one oh nine.
One oh eight and one oh nine.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document one ten. Ministerio en Manto de Jesús requests permission to use the Campagnon Park on July twenty-seventh, August twenty-fourth, September seventh from two P M. to six P M. Signing came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. Again, a representative from the church was at the ordinance committee meeting. Their paperwork was in order, and it did come up with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document one thirteen. Transfer Rental License, four ninety Hampshire Street. Angel Almonte. This item came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. This was also a renewal of an existing license. Paperwork was in order, and it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor Tumi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at the paperwork here, and it says he's, he wants to be open from Monday through Saturday from noon time to five A M. in the morning.
This is a gentleman that, he pushes a car, a slushy car, I believe.
It's a slush, huh?
Yeah, it's a slushy car. That time might be, might be wrong. The gentleman's here, so I, he did put five A M.
It says from twelve P M. to five A M.
I don't know if you've ever heard that slush.
I don't think he's up at that time. I know the gentleman. Three o'clock in the afternoon, he's home.
Should that be corrected?
Mister, señor Monte.
I don't think the slush was last time, huh?
I think at four, three or four o'clock in the afternoon, he's out.
Should I ask him in Spanish, Mr. President? I will translate while you're concerned. ¿Cómo está señor Monte? Aquí en la aplicación de usted dice que usted va a operar desde las doce de la tarde hasta las cinco de la mañana, pero reconocemos que un error es hasta las cinco de la tarde, ¿no?
Bueno, yo le voy a decir la verdad. Si hay personas que me compren a las cinco y a las seis yo voy a estar vendiendo.
His response is, if there was somebody that would purchase any of my products at five A M. in the morning, of course I will be up at that time. So. ¿Hasta qué hora usted desea que esté disponible su permiso?
Bueno, pongo a las seis porque yo ya a las seis ya voy para mi casa.
It will be until six P M. because at six P M. I will be on my way home already. I would like to make a friendly amendment. Está seguro hasta las seis?
Because it gets darker on eight.
Si no me compra. Sí, pero está bien, lo pueden poner a las seis.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to make sure that the permit, it's from twelve P M. until six P M.
He definitely wants six P M.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor, with the amendment to six P M., say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Muchas gracias.
Okay.
This is with the amendment. Correct. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is document one fifteen. Old Gold Dealer License, four forty-two Essex Street. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. Again, at the May ninth meeting of the ordinance committee, the applicant did appear before us. We did review the paperwork, which was in order. It is a renewal of an existing license, and it did come up from subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Document one sixteen. Neighborhood Block Party Intersection of Essex and Nesmith Street on Saturday, June twenty-second from ten thirty A M. to two thirty P M. Signing came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Council President. Representatives from the Nesmith and Essex Street Neighborhood Association were at our meeting. They are proposing a block party on Saturday, June twenty-second. This will be the second annual block party. It had gone off quite successfully in the past. It did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the, actually, next item on the agenda is document one eighteen thirteen. Big City requests permission to use the Pemberton Park to broadcast an event for car and sound enthusiasts. Madam Chair, I think this gentleman came in earlier this evening to have decided to withdraw.
And I'm glad that they chose to withdraw, so I would gladly make a motion to withdraw document number one eighteen.
Second.
[laughing].
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document one nineteen. Merrimack Valley Habitat for Humanity and Y W M C A request permission to use the Campagnon Park for the Brickman Triathlon on Sunday, September twenty-ninth from six A M. to one P M. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. A representative of Habitat for Humanity on behalf of Habitat and the Merrimack Valley Y did appear at the subcommittee meeting, requesting permission to use the Campagnon Park. This is, I believe, their fourth annual Brickman Triathlon in the city, and it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document one twenty-one. Phantom Night requests permission to use the Pemberton Park for their first annual bike and car wash to benefit diabetes awareness on July twenty-seventh from eleven A M. to six P M. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. I believe there's some representatives from the group tonight. I don't know if they want to speak because it gives them opportunity to promote their event, but they were at the subcommittee level, and they're requesting permission to use Pemberton Park for this annual bike and car wash, and it will be on July twenty-seventh from eleven A M. to six P M. It did come up from the subcommittee with the unanimous favorable recommendation to amend the time from eight A M. to six thirty P M. to allow for setup and cleanup, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Second. Want to say something?
Name and address on the record, please. Lewis Reels, fourteen Cedar Street. This is our first awareness with diabetes. Again, my son was diagnosed with diabetes, type one diabetes, before his third birthday. I used to do these events in Florida, so I just, I moved here with my sons so they could go to Jocelyn Clinic in Boston, and they're the ones sponsoring us up.
I'm very familiar with that clinic. My brother's type one diabetic too, since he was nine, so I know what you're going through. Madam, Mr. Vice Chair from the, oh, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you tell us what, just a little bit more about the event entails? Just kind of give yourself a little insight.
Phantom Nights, first of all, is a car and bike club. We got together because we all got kids, and we want to show them better and show them that we're doing stuff in Lawrence and make it positive. The event will have bouncy houses that was donated. We did get the insurance, everything. We got the one million, two million insurance. We have a barbecue day, and the Jocelyn Clinic will be there. Doctors will be there speaking to people for questions and stuff like that for the diabetes.
Great.
Thank you.
Very favorable.
Anybody else? This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck with the, I'm sure I'll be there to support you guys. Take care. Next item on the agenda is document one twenty-three. Transfer Rental License, eighty-nine Saratoga Street. Signing came up from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. At the ordinance committee level, Antonio Power was present. He did request the renewal of his transfer rental license, and the paperwork was in order, and it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation. I do make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor Tumi.
Yes, in reading the instructions here, it says hours, hours and days of operation. It says eight hours, seven days a week. It doesn't say from to. It's supposed to say from to.
He has the same business as the gentleman before us with the little push cart.
It's a little slushy carts.
Little slushy.
Snow cones.
Yeah, snow cones.
Is he, did he leave?
He's here, he's here.
Oh.
Antonio.
You want me to just clarify the hours? No, that's...
Buenas, don Antonio, el horario que usted va a estar vendiendo su producto, ¿cuál será?
Es de nueve a, de once más o menos a seis de la tarde.
Approximately eleven A M. until six P M.
Seven days a week, right?
Dos siete día de la semana, correcto?
Sí.
Can you just ask which slush is better, his or the other guy's?
Dice ella en relajo, ¿cuál de los dos frío fría mejor? De usted o del señor que viene anterior?
Puede pasar para que lo pruebe.
I will give you some so you could taste it. Make a comparison.
Okay. Sounds good.
I have both, by the way. They're both good. Shot.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Okay. Está bueno.
The motion on the table has been second. All those...
I'd like to amend the motion to include the time from eleven A M. until six P M.
I accept the amendment gladly.
This motion has been second and was amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document one twenty-eight. Transfer Rental License, seventy-three Main Street. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Council President. With regard to this item, the paperwork was in order. It did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation. There was one question for the applicant with regard to parking their vehicle off hours. Specifically, they park it at seventy-three Main Street. I'm just trying to confirm the zoning of that location because if it's, I don't know where Main Street is. It could be zoned business, and then it wouldn't be a problem, but if it's zoned residential, it is a problem. So I just want to make sure that the applicant is aware. They, they need to verify that, and if it's zoned residential, they cannot park their vehicle there. I just, but we would approve the renewal. We just wouldn't, we just need them to know that they could get towed if they park their vehicle there. But she's, yeah, can you just, I just want to make sure she knows that.
Okay. Señora Carmen, le queremos, la concejal Bernal menciona de que es importante que usted esté consciente de saber el estacionamiento de su troca, en dónde le va a tocar, de que si la zona de usted, donde usted vive, le está estacionando actualmente en la calle Main, si es residencial, no puede estacionarse allí, pero si es parte de negocio, podría estacionarse allí. Podemos trabajar junto en esto para averiguar qué zona usted está?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, yo me parqueo en frente al parque. O sea, me quiero parquear frente al parque de la lilla y entre yasom y como.
Ella dice, al final de la noche cuando usted termina.
Oh, cuando termine. Okay. Yo hay un parqueo detrás de la frutería, que hay que parquean todo el troca. Yo puedo conseguir ahí un parqueo.
She parks where La Frutería is, which is...
Just a park?
Yeah. The business, it's a, it's a business zone.
Okay. If she's parking in a business zone, then that's fine. Just if she parks in a residential driveway, even if it's her own, it can be problematic if the area, if the neighborhood's zoned residential.
Sí. Importante saber de que si lo estaciona en su casa podría recibir una, una multa por eso porque es solo para carro de la vivienda, no pueden parcarse trocas allí.
Okay.
En su casa.
Mm-hmm.
Yo voy a trabajar con, yo la voy a llamar.
Okay, está bien. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I make motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Relax, man.
Este, usted tiene un documento aquí ahora, ¿verdad?
Yeah, yeah. Just usted se puede retirar.
All over here. Same.
Okay. Thank you. What's that?
Let's see.
We passed the motion already.
Next item, yeah, next item on the agenda is document one thirty-two. Handicap Park in eight West Kenneth Street. Deciding to come up from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. This item came up from the Orders Committee. Mr. President, Madam Chair from the Orders.
Thank you, Council President. The Officer Scanlon had gone out and met with the owner of 8 West Kenneth Street and determined that there is appropriate location for parking, for a handicap spot there. The applicant does have a placard, and it came up from the Subcommittee unanimously favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and any requisite language from the city attorney for that. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 122, Review and Acceptance of Grant Awarded to the City of Lawrence Community Development Department for Mass Development Site Remediation for $135,015. Submitted by James Barnes and came up from the Budget and Finance Committee. Madam Chair, from Mr. Budget and Finance.
Took a break.
He just stepped out.
Oh, he stepped out for a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to...
This way?
Two, three, four, five. Motion to recess for three-minute recess. Second. Opposed, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Three minutes. Nothing sensitive, right?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 122, Review and Acceptance of Grants awarded to the City of Lawrence Community Development Department. This item came up for $135,015. Came up from the Budget and Finance Committee. Madam Chair, from the Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee. It was sent up with unanimous favorable recommendation to do as a formal motion.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 76, Disposition of 154-156 Union Street, Tax Map 88, Lot 49, Proposed Sale to Frank Giles for $20,000. This item came up from the Housing Committee. Madam Vice Chair from the Housing Committee.
Thank you, Council President. At the...
Or next to King.
At the May 13th meeting of the Housing Committee, we did make a recommendation to send this up. We made a favorable recommendation to send this up for disposition. It's a 145-156 Union Street, be the sale to Frank S. Giles in the sum of $20,000, subject to the conditions of sales attached there, too. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Just one quick question, Madam Chair. You might not have the answer. Maybe Richard Burke has the answers. Richard here? Richard Burke?
Yes, yeah.
Do we offer this particular property to any of the abutters?
Yes. Customarily, we do contact the abutters as a matter of course.
And there was no interest?
No.
Okay. Thank you. This is motion on the table has been second.
Sorry, just a follow-up on that, Council President. And how do we verify that you guys did that? Do you have like a list of the surrounding abutters that you guys sent to?
Yes. Actually, I refer to the tax map. I identify the abutting properties. I go into the assessor's database and copy the name and address of those property owners. And then they get a letter in the mail informing them of the sale.
Registered, ma'am?
Pardon me?
Registered.
Uh, no.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This is motion on the table has been second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 189, Disposition 246 Lawrence Street, Tax Map 150, Lot 74, lot approximately 5,252 square feet. Consists of a paved parking lot located in an R2 residential zone. Proposed sale to Daniel Shihei...Hope I pronounced it right. Shihei? Shihei for $25,000. This item came up from the Housing Committee. Madam Chair, from the Housing Committee.
Thank you, Council President. At the May 13th meeting of the Housing Committee, this item was discussed and the vote unanimously did come up with a recommendation to approve the sale of property to Daniel Shihei, doing business as the Celtic American Association, for the sum of $25,000, under the conditions of sale listed in the attachment. It was specifically for parking for the club, as opposed to any building. There's prohibition on building on that. I just want to state that for the record. And it came up with unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question.
Councilor Tumi?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's 3,700 square feet in this one. It says here, "Construction of fence and parking lot with entrance on all the streets." Is there any way that that can be altered once it's approved? In other words, he's saying he wants to put up a parking lot in that area there. Can he at some point later on change his mind and do something else once it's approved here?
Well, he's going to have to come before the zoning for a variance.
For variance?
Okay. Just a question on that, too.
Councilor Rivera?
But isn't the...Isn't this written into the sale?
It's a deed restriction.
Deed restriction, right?
Yes. In this particular case, yes. Because of...Not only because of its size, but because of environmental issues, given its past use as a gas station, we wouldn't allow for any construction.
So they...It basically would take a vote of the city council to...
That's correct.
Is that the...I'm sorry. Is that the triangle property we're looking where you have a mess there?
That's right.
Can I through you, Councilman? I just had a question for the Mr. Burke and also possibly an amendment based on his response. What I really wanted to see happen at that location, I know I've been speaking with Mr. McCarthy and they've been talking a lot about fence heights when they're within a certain proximity to a road, that because sometimes people put up a six-foot-high fence, you can't see around it. So actually, we're working right now to amend the zoning ordinance so that fence heights within certain distance of the road are limited to like three and a half to four feet. I just want to ask. I'm presuming that the applicant is talking about a shorter fence.
Yes, as far as I know, and I believe Mr. Shihei is here if you'd like to ask him directly.
I just want to just clarify that one point and make sure that that becomes a condition of the sale.
Sure.
Let me now, just for record, please. And I'm sorry I mispronounced your last name.
That's okay. Good evening. Daniel Shihei, 145 Franklin Street.
Thanks. Hi, Mr. Shihei. Just to clarify the point I was just asking, what's the height of the fence that you're proposing at this location?
I'm proposing a wooden guardrail that's going to be less than four feet.
Okay. Is it slatted or some...When you say wooden guardrail, in my mind, that sounds very low.
Yes.
So you think two to three feet? Is that more realistic?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's very appropriate. That sounds good. I just would make the motion contingent that the height of the fence not exceed...Is three and a half feet fair to you? I just want to...
Yes, I...Yes, it would be.
Okay. So not to exceed three and a half feet, just because of the location. So it's in the middle of the road.
Yeah, it's in the middle of the road.
So I would make that amendment to my own motion.
That's a good one, because it's a very tough location. We have an issue on...
My district is an issue, yeah.
This is motion on the table has been amended. It was second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is document 185, Disposition, Riverside Drive, Tax Map 225, Lot 92. This lot is approximately 5,252 square feet. Consists of a paved parking lot and located in the R2 residential zone. This item was previously withdrawn, proposed sale to Daheer's Group for $21,000. This item came up from the Housing Committee. Madam Chair, from the Housing.
This item came up from the Subcommittee without a recommendation. Can I make that in the form of a committee report?
Right here, second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Chair?
I would make a motion for discussion purposes to approve the disposition of Riverside Drive to Mr. Daye for the allocated sum of the $12,000, subject to the conditions listed in the attached condition of sale. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second. Discussion, Councilor Rivera?
Am I to go first if I...
Councilor, I see.
Sorry, that's okay. The discussion, basically, this project had come before this council in the past, and it is zoned as an R2, and the applicant at that time had proposed a two-family dwelling that had a very much a single-family facade in the front. But it was clearly a two-family, would need to accommodate for four cars. At that time, a strong recommendation was made by members of the council, including myself, that a single-family might be a more appropriate option for that site. Where it is, there's an apartment building on one side. It is very close to the next-door neighbor. There was some discussion that perhaps you would leave this as open space. The term was also used that it be a buffer for the neighbors. I just...I don't know if that's our position to create buffers for neighbors. So I did support the concept of a single-family the first time around. I do still support the concept of a single-family this time around. And I do think that the proposal is a good one. Do we need some vacant space in the city? Absolutely. But that particular parcel, while it does abut the river, it's on such a busy street. Like, one of the topics was raised at Subcommittee was perhaps to create a park there. And I just feel like I can't think of any less appropriate location for a park for children on that busy, busy street. Another block in Uptower Hill, absolutely appropriate for a playground. But right on Water Street where it becomes Riverside Drive is, you know, it's a state highway. I just don't think that that was a park location. So I did support it last time as a single-family. I still support it now as a single-family, and I do make that in the form of a motion. I did make that in the form of a motion.
There's already six. Councilor Rivera?
I just was...I was one of the opponents for not allowing this to be sold last time. And I just wanted to just get some...There's no maps with this packet this time around. At least I don't think I see it. Sorry, I don't see them in my packet. Well, this is one of those...This thing had the slope.
Yeah, it has a steep slope in the back, going down to the river. Makes the lot look actually bigger than it is for development.
So is there... I guess I'm trying to figure out where the house would sit, where the front would face.
I believe the applicant intends to build a single-family with the narrow end essentially facing the river between the street and the river to accommodate the building.
So the front door would be on the side, face...You're saying on the street?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. Will it at least face...Is it going to face the parking lot or is it going to face the back of the...
I'm guessing it would probably face away from the parking lot, but Mr. Daye or...
You don't know yet?
Other way, but you wouldn't want to face that person's house.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Good evening, Councilors. The front door would face Riverside Drive. The property would face...The front of the home would face. It would possibly be about 30 feet width, with about 44 in depth. The parking would be on the side, on the side of the property. There'd be no parking in front of the property. I've done similar properties around the city and they've become, you know, they're three bedrooms, one and a half bots. I finish off the basement. It'd be a nice rear deck overlooking the back property. We minimize the tree...There's some trees on the property. We minimize what we take down for trees. And whatever else I can help you with, you know.
No, I appreciate you working with the lot and going back. Yeah, I appreciate that, because we did, you know, we were kind of strong about the space being too crowded to begin with. So thank you for that, and I think that this is a fine proposal. Especially, I mean, you're trying to get away from sideways houses, off-streets.
Absolutely. I don't...If you see my...What I've done for...In around the city, I don't conceive of houses with front doors on the sides of lots, whatever. I try to keep everything with the profile and the curb appeal to the front of the property.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Vasquez?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Daye, I just wanted to ask for some clarification. You said that there will be no parking allowed in the property?
No, no, no. There are no parking in front of the property.
In front of the property.
On the side of the property. Because that's...I don't really feel a value of property when you have cars parked in front. Consider them parking to the side of the property or to the rear of the property. I'm sorry I said that wrong.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
I've seen some of the properties, the heat builds out in the city, they're very, very...Look at, you know, look at nice houses. I mean, you do a great job. You're probably one of the most respectable builders around here in the City of Lawrence. And I think the properties that you're putting on these neighborhoods is actually beautifying the areas. These are nice-looking homes that you put up there, and I want to thank you for that. I've seen some other developers out there. They just put a box, four walls, and no character to the property. At least you put some nice character, and it looks, you know, very like nice-looking homes.
I appreciate the comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is motion on the table has been second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 192, Disposition, Thornton Street, Tax Map 53, Lot 7. The lot is approximately 4,000 square feet and consists of a vacant land in a residential zone. Proposed sale to Daheer's Group for $21,000. Proposed sale to Daher's Group for $21,000. Item came up from the Housing Committee. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel President. At the Housing Committee level, this did come up with unanimous, just want to make sure I have this right, this was the, it was approval of the sale to the Dyer Group for the $21,000, and it was, was subject to the conditions of sale. I make that in the form of a motion.
If I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, same question. There was another bidder for that, Mary Mac Valley Habitat for Humanity, for just a little above the bid amount, and they're both gonna construct a single-family home. Do you happen to know any special reason why they wouldn't vote for the Daher Group?
I believe it was, in that case, it was a concern that Habitat would not be able to begin the project in a timely manner.
That's a consideration as to whether or not to give it to them or not?
Yes, I mean, the task force, I think, considered both proposals, but weighed any possible delays that awarding the bid to Habitat for Humanity might entail.
I've noticed that there's been, there's three or four of these lots that have been put forth this evening, whereas Habitat for Humanity has recommended or has put in a bid for every one of them, and each time it was not picked. I just wondered if there's something, why that, why that would be, especially when they're both building single-family homes, that you say it's because they can't build it in a timely fashion?
That was the general concern raised by the members of the task force, that in the past, some properties have been awarded, but there's been a significant lag time between the sale and the beginning of construction.
Does that really make a difference?
It did to the members of the task force. I don't have a vote, so I didn't have a say in the, in the final decision, but I believe that, you know, given this, that this lot's been vacant for so long in a residential neighborhood, we'd sooner see, would rather see the development sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree with you guys. Habitat for Humanity, they're taking forever, and a lot of the projects here in the city, especially that building right on the corner of Parker and Salem Street, that construction's been going for the past, I don't know, seven years, and we're still getting complaints from the neighbors around there, in order for us to sell them. I mean, that was a good idea.
Yep, I would say that's, that's a common, that's a common concern.
Absolutely, absolutely. We want to beautify the neighborhoods. All right, thank you.
I just, I want to, I support the Subcommittee's recommendation, we are not the task force, just to clarify, the Housing Subcommittee is not the task force that makes the recommendation. I do support the motion that was made by the Subcommittee as far as awarding this particular property to Mr. Dyer at this time. However, I'm a huge proponent of Habitat for Humanity, and if it takes them 50 years to make a house, I'm all for it. In this particular instance, there was a slightly higher bid by Mr. Dyer, and he does have a good track record in the city. Habitat does have several active projects going on in the city. I think they do great work, and I don't want to in any way disparage them, but I definitely stand by the decision to award this particular project at this particular time to Mr. Dyer.
Thank you. Anybody else? This is a motion on the table, it's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
Next item on the agenda is document 18, withdrawn, document 188, disposition Spruce Street, tax map 171, Lot 13. Deciding to come up from the Housing Committee to be withdrawn.
I just want to ask Mr. Burke to stick around for one second.
I have a question about this one.
This is actually a similar issue to the 128, 132 Union Street, in that we're going to have to reinstate that document number, but we, because it's not before the council for a final vote, we'll address that at the Subcommittee level.
So at this point, it's make, sorry.
No, that's okay, I just need a motion to second, and then we'll discuss it, whatever decision we'll... Madam Chair, can you read the...
Yeah.
Committee report, please.
The committee report was to send this up to the full council with the unanimous favorable recommendation to withdraw the document, and I make that in the form of a motion for purposes of discussion.
If I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Counselora Reyes.
Okay, no, no, I just want to make sure, because what I remember about this specific document was that we were supposed to table it.
Yes, it should be tabled, not withdrawn. I believe that the reason it was characterized as a withdrawal was because the committee voted, even though it didn't make a recommendation to the full council, it recommended that the two documents be merged, well, essentially to fall under one document number, but as we found out from subsequent discussions with the city attorney's office, we would rather, for the purposes of clarity, rather keep both document numbers attached to their respective parcels.
So my question is, did they have to apply again? Is that what the process?
I don't believe so, because the recommendation wasn't offered at the committee level, it can go, it can be reconsidered at the next meeting of the Housing Committee, but we would, the planning department would respectfully ask that the item not be withdrawn, so that that document number can be reattached, if you will, to that property.
Well, we can, we can cross the merge, strike the merge, and send it back to Housing.
That would be preferable, thank you.
Yes, so is, because I heard you say you take it in consideration, but this is gonna be coming again in front of the houses.
I think that was my understanding from last week's meeting.
That's my understanding too, so I just want to be clear, because I know that I've been working very close with, you know, with the applicants, and I just want to be passing the, you know, the right messages.
Sure, and we hope to have other, the other applicants, I think, at the request of the chairman, that he wanted to be able to review the three separate bids.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I know there's a motion, but if we can just withdraw the motion, strike the merge, and send it back, and I'll send it back down to the Housing Committee.
I move to withdraw, my motion to withdraw.
I'm gonna send this item down, back to the Housing Committee, strike and merge. Strike and merge. Okay? That'll work?
That would work, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Old Business, document 178-12, Parking Enterprise Fund, balance in the parking, balance in the parking garage, special revenue should be transferred to the Parking Garage Enterprise Fund in the amount of $348,201, $15 to be amended. Deciding was submitted by Budget and Finance Director, Mr. Dianello. He's here today. I usually send this item, Mr. Dianello, I know you're here, it's Old Business, and I'll probably, I usually send this to the Budget and Finance Committee, just, is this item, needs a vote from us today, or?
It doesn't, we just like to have it before the end of June 30th, but I'm here to answer any questions, if you like.
I mean, since this is Old Business, Mr. Chair from the Housing, maybe from the Budget and Finance.
Yeah, I have a order question. We took this up, does this fall into the category of having to do like a vote to take it up between, before the year's up?
Yes.
Actually, I should, Counsel President, sorry. That's all right, I...
Well, he just mentioned it. He thinks before June 30th. Yeah, that's, that was his opening statement, it's gotta be taken before June 30th.
All right.
We can send it down, you can discuss it.
I just don't know what, what would we be amending, so I would like to...
Mr. Dianello, I know you've been here.
No problem.
Few hours.
I am at the council's, that can call, how's that?
You're the best.
Okay.
This item's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee, thank you.
That's official number.
Next item on the agenda, table matters, anybody want to take anything off the table? If not, we'll go to New Business.
We've got...
Am I missing anything here? No, we're good. Next item on the agenda is New Business, document, oh, we'll go right through the New Business. He's been patiently waiting. New Business, document 133, Transfer Rental License Fernando Santiago, 34 Greenwood Street, going down to the Owners Committee. Document 134, Request to Use the Camper in Carmel Park from June 6th through August 29. And every Thursday excludes July 4th and Hispanic Week from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM for an event named Roomba Ingat Parket Dancing in the Park, it's going down to the Owners, submitted by Maria Veronica Antich, it's going down to the Owners Committee. Document 136, Handicap Parking, Platte Street, at the intersection of Sergeant Street, submitted by Soledad Cordero, Via Consular Montes, going down to the Owners Committee. Document 137, Transfer Rental License, Ice Cream Sales from Vehicle, submitted by Ricardo Secuna, 53 Stevens Ave, it's going down to the Owners Committee. Document 138, Transfer Rental License, Antonio Javier, 154 Margins Street, it's going down to the Owners Committee. Document 139, Review and Acceptance of Grants to the City of Lawrence Community Development Department, submitted by, actually, for Dana Farber Cancer Institute for $16,200, and receive supplemental funding for $6,500, for a total of $22,700, submitted by Community Development Director James Barnes. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 140, Transfer Rental License, Olga Jimenez, 43 Texas Avenue, it's going down to the Owners Committee. Document 141-13, Change of Poll Location, Gimel School District D2, submitted by our city clerk. I know the city clerk wants us to take this item as an emergency, but before I do that, Mr. Clerk, can you give us an overview, why we want to take this as an emergency?
Thank you, Counsel President. Counselors, I asked if you'd be taking it as an emergency, I learned about a week ago, contemporaneously with the reconstruction work to be done with the Gilmet, informed that the Gilmet will be closed down with heavy equipment and construction equipment beginning June 1st by TBW Director, Acting Director Jonas Sensi, which means the public will not have access to the building as a polling location as a consequence. We ran into this situation in 2010, we immediately relocated over to the fire alarm building right next door to the Gilmet School, which worked out very well. Given the number of people that we anticipate to be voting at that location, it has been suggested, and I suggest to you, that this be done again, that we again use the fire alarm station. I've already secured the permission of the fire chief, the permission of the fire department alarm folks. My next stop along this chain is to talk to the Secretary of State's office, to have any inspections done that they may require, and kind of, at the end of the chain, which should have been the beginning, I've already been inquiring and asking for the approval of the administration. In order to cross the t's and not the i's, council's approval would be sought as part of this project. I've got four weeks to do this, I think there's plenty of time, but I'd like to keep this up at the council level, keep you informed, that way I can access the council quickly for a vote, should one be necessary, to approve the location, and then proceed from there.
Based on your, on your explanation, I'd like to take item 141, suspend the rules and take this item as an emergency.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Anybody has a question for Clerk?
Yeah, I do.
Counselor Vasquez.
Sure. I guess my concern is, we just moved a polling location from Prospect Hill, and we're moving this, and are we gonna move this back in November and September for the other elections that we're having?
That, that's the idea. I'm being told that the school will be functional, operational, as you've been told and heard reported to you, was it a week ago or two weeks ago, that they would be in operation for the school year.
So you're gonna send a communication to voters that in June, when they go to vote for the special election, they're gonna vote in the fire alarm house?
In the fire alarm building right next door.
Then you're gonna send them another letter in, soon thereafter, in August, saying, for the September election, you're gonna vote in the school?
As required, yes.
Are they within eyesight of each other?
Yes, that's the beauty of it, that people who do show up to vote at the Gilmet will be immediately directed, we have plans, we have poll workers there to direct them in person, as well as one of the big electric signs you've been seeing around the city, to vote here, pointing over to the 60 Broadway Place as opposed to the 80 Broadway. It worked well in 2010, I'm hoping that, and suggesting that it will work well as in this, in this circumstance.
Are we expecting any other poll locations to be moving between now and September?
Unless there's mold or there's construction, or they burn down.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody else? Okay. So...
Frank? I would like to say something.
Counsel Arquino?
I think it's a great thing, because it's right next to it, and it's, I don't think that the voters are gonna be having any trouble finding it. It's right next, next door, so I would be voting in favor of this, I think it's a good thing for our voters.
Now, you don't want us to take a vote on this yet, correct?
No, my suggestion is to table until I can secure authorizations, both from the administration and review by the Secretary of State, should they choose to review.
Now, Secretary Galvin's also with the...
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
I have to obtain the authorization first from the city, before I go to Mr. Galvin's office.
Got you. Looking for a motion to table this item?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document 142, Las Palma Restaurant, Request Permission to Place Four Tables and Chairs in Front of Their Business at 445 Essex Street, item was submitted by Maria Thomas, from 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM, it's going down to the Owners Committee. Document 143-13, Lawrence Firefighter Local 146, Agreement Approval Per Mass General Law, Chapter 150, Section 7B, submitted by Marilyn Tewas, going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 144, Flashing Lights, Essex and Ames Street, submitted by Counsel Arquino, it's going down to the Owners Committee. Document 145, MW Whip, Temporary Funding Allocation, Physical Year 2014, submitted by Rafael Abizlaime, Secretary Director, it's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Just a point of, actually, Counsel President, if I could, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we get the document number 143-13, if we can send a letter to the administration and to Mr. Dianello, to get the firefighters agreement appro, the agreement before close of business on Thursday?
That's a formal motion?
It's a formal motion.
Second. All those in favor, that's to send a letter.
Yeah, and with the caveat that if we don't get it by that time period, we're gonna have to push, not voting on it, on the night of our meeting.
Fair enough. Just a motion on the table, it's was second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. I know there's a gentleman here that wants to give us, I know this is the president, we usually don't do this, but we'll give you an opportunity to address the city council. He has some very important news, exciting news for the City of Lawrence. Name an address for the record, please.
Justin Crowe, 23 Wood Lane, Lawrence. Thank you for this time. Basically, I just want to make an announcement, we're gonna be doing a rededication for three veterans from the City of Lawrence on Saturday. Counsel Toomey's been working on getting all the plaques and everything secured over at three different locations, Salem and South Union, Salem and Everett, and Conca and Broadway. Basically, we're gonna be starting at 9:30 at Salem and South Union, I just want to extend the invite to all of you, anybody that would like to come, we're gonna be doing a motorcade from one location to Salem and Everett, and then over to Conca and Broadway. Correct, right? That's how we're gonna do it? We're probably expecting about 100 people so far, obviously, more than, more than area, it'd be a lot of fun. We, I did talk to Sergeant Major Ronan over at the Lawrence High School today, and they are gonna be sending a color guard, and also Jamie Melendez is, you know, working on some things as well. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, anybody from the city that wants to come, I mean, they're more than welcome. We're gonna be doing a motorcade between the three locations, and we're gonna be doing like just hamburgers and hot dogs over at the Clatter from 12 to 3 in the afternoon, so it's open to the public, anybody that wants to come, should be fun.
Where does it start?
Starting at 9:30 at Salem and South Union for Joe Guile, he's a Vietnam veteran, and then we're going to be going over to Salem and Everett for Captain Mulligan, who we did the proclamation for this evening, and then we're gonna be going over to see Sergeant Morris at Conca and Broadway, the old Cedar Crest location.
Burger King.
It's Burger King now, yes.
So, you're doing three sites, right?
There's going to be three sites. I think, um, the dedication's take about twenty minutes, a half hour each location.
I was, I was suspect we'd do that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, for sites at nine thirty, and then after the three?
After the three, we're going to be just basically leaving Concon and Broadway and heading right to the Clatter, and we're just going to do, Paul Martin's going to be doing hot dogs, hamburgers, pasta salad, whatever you want, chicken wings, pizza.
Fantastic, great, great idea.
Yeah?
Was that your idea, or Counselor Toomey's idea?
That was Counselor Toomey's idea. No, it's...
Is this, this Saturday?
This comes Saturday.
It's this Saturday morning, so, it, it's kind of, it's kind of neat, because it is Memorial Day, and, you know, I mean, it's, you know, I grew up doing it, and I think it's great for, especially the younger generation, we get a good civics lessons out, you know, out of this. Um, but, um, hopefully, we get a big turnout from the high school, so, should be a good time, you know?
Thank you.
Besides, what else do you have to do on Memorial Day weekend?
You're always on top. All right, anybody else?
Thank you, Justin.
Before I ask for, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, your time.
I'm sure you see a lot of us.
Yeah, I, yeah, I hope so.
In the area.
Should be fun.
Sounds good.
All right.
Before I adjourn, thank you, before I adjourn, uh, ordinance?
Yes, this Thursday.
What time? Seven o'clock? Mr. Vice Chair, Budget and Finance?
I believe we're having an appointment to have this question made.
Yes, on Tuesday, twenty-eighth.
Why are you meeting?
On Tuesday. It's going to be a surprise, it's called a special meeting. Very special, on the twenty.
We will be having a meeting right after.
Right after, I will be in around seven. Counselor, actually, so there's nobody here for housing, so, next to King.
Is there anything new coming up on the housing?
No, I didn't see anything for housing here today.
So, I don't see no housing committee meeting. There's nothing new, so, no.
No housing committee, no person or committee.
Okay.
We did send, actually, you know, we did send one, but that's, there's still, yeah, there's still some work to be done on that particular item. Um, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Actually, before we do that, I just want to let everybody know, because I know we were, I've been working with, uh, John here, on putting the city council meetings on our website. I know, when, one of the things that I first did when I became council president was to, uh, make sure that, or probably give people the ability to watch the city council meeting live on the internet, so if you're anywhere in the world, you have access to internet, you're able to watch the city council meeting online.
Wow.
So, that's the first thing, one of the things that I did. It was free, I know some people don't like the commercials, but it's free to the city, it doesn't cost taxpayers any money, and what we're going to do now, we're going to have an additional site on YouTube, all you got to do is type City of Lawrence, and you'll be able to see all the archives, all the meetings, over the past year, year and a half, and also eventually, we want to have the subcommittees there, subcommittees there as well. So, now, if you have, all you got to do is type, go to YouTube, and type City of Lawrence. Um, I know right now, we were given CDs, hard copy CDs to the library, I mean, how many people go to the library to get this? I think this is easier for people to have access to all the meetings, and also to have